Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting in order. Here will you rise and say in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Kalosamun?
Present.
Cut.
Here.
Luschewski?
Here.
Freeters?
Here.
Alkhauser?
Here.
Terulis?
Here.
Tealain. A court is established. Do we have any amendments to tonight's agenda?
I would like to remove UW 201634 for the consent agenda.
That was 201634. Number three?
Thirty-four, number three. Thirty-four.
Anybody in favor of that? We're good. Okay. Okay, we don't have any presentations tonight or public hearings. Do we have any citizens' comments on agenda items?
I leave that to you. You have a discussion tonight for home rule.
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Todd Millan, 61 Cotswell Drive, Yorkville. You're having a discussion tonight about home rule. In the past, elected officials, let's say, and a lot of citizens in this town within the corporate limits, are very apprehensive about the home rule. And allowing, basically, the concern is, gives you guys the ability to raise funds or levy taxes or fees a lot more willingly than being able to do so out of rougher end them. That said, Bart did a pretty good job of laying out numerous reasons why home rules should be considered other than taxation. I hope you've had a chance to look that packet over. If not, it might be something worth keeping for future discussion as this goes forward. I think your deadline for that might be, what, sometime in August for to get it on the ballot in November. That said, as you know, we've been working with the citizens over there, and lately they've been doing it on their own, Joel, at City Center Apartment Complex. Your staff, city administrator, everybody says that there's basically nothing you can do over there because you're not a home rule city. That said, I think that it's time that maybe Yorkville look at this situation besides just the taxation question because there's very many facets of home rule that have merit and would allow Yorkville to assume a greater role in looking out for folks and their lives. And especially for the ones that are, maybe don't have the income or the ability to do so for themselves. And as an elected official, one of the jobs you're supposed to do is protect. And I think home rule has some provisions in there that allow you to do that for looking out for folks that may not be able to look out for themselves or to hold certain individuals accountable that have other motives than just the natural good. That's the term I want to use. So, anyway, I hope that's a discussion I'm looking forward to. I'm going to stick around and watch you debate that and hope it sees some light and give the citizens of this town the chance to vote on that. And that means put it on the ballot. And as a process, if something is approved by you all, then I think it also is beholden that if you do vote for that, then maybe you need to help educate the electorate on why you voted that way and why you would consider going the home rule route. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, moving along. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Move.
Second.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Okay, we have no minutes for approval. Informational bills for payment is $1,446,027.49. Alter Mayor's report. We have bond ordinances on tonight, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of waterworks and sewage revenue refunding bonds of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6,500,000 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved.
Comments or questions? Roll call. Roll call. Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Luschewski passes. Okay, our second one. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2016 of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $6,500,000 for the purpose of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding refunding debt certificates, Series 2006A, and general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2007A, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions on this one? Roll call, please. Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Luschewski passes. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an ordinance calling a public hearing concerning the intent of the City Council of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, to sell not to exceed $6,000, I'm sorry, $6,500,000 in general obligation alternate revenue bonds and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
So moved.
Comments or questions on this one? Roll call, please. Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Luschewski passes. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an ordinance approving the Bristol Bay Park purchase and sale agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Move.
Second.
Comments or questions on this? There's some staff updates?
Yes, there is a handout on your desk. It's Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement. It's a series of eight changes to the actual purchase agreement that's in the packet and then the use agreement, which is an exhibit to that. And I'll go through them. And the important thing is that Kathy and I reviewed them. They were given to us earlier today. In general, we're good with them. And if the City Council wants to approve them subject to those changes or to legal review, we can make that happen. If not, we're proceeding forward with preparing documents and a couple other items that would still allow us to be on a late July closing schedule even if we were to table it this evening and push it forward to me. So I've numbered the changes to the agreement and I'll just go through and narrate them. And if anybody has any questions, we can go over them at that time. Your first change is going to be on page seven. Simply, we're changing the form from page Kendall. That was just a typo in the section there on real estate transfer taxes. Second is on the following page. It's the simple insertion of the attorney for Elevation Investments LLC, which is Kelly Helen. So that's just contact information there. The third is the first substantial one. It's on the following page, page nine. It's, so it's the end of the agreement, which is where we get into on legal things that the attorneys like to discuss. It deals with a 1031 exchange, which is how the developer is going to actually title to the property and then use it for tax purposes from the sale of another property. So Kathy hasn't had a chance to review it in depth. She's okay with it in general. She's, the language on its face looked fine. But she did request that we would have a chance to go back and talk to Kelly about that. So if you're willing to approve that subject to legal review, I'm sure she would appreciate that. The next change, number four, is going to be on page two of the land use agreement where we actually have four other changes. And this is where you get into the content of the actual use agreement. So all of these things are just kind of the supplemental terms that were put in the proposal that we decided to incorporate as part of the land use agreement. So the first, which is 3B, talks about construction of a path. So the original language that is struck through is actually verbatim from the developer's proposal. But just in talking about it, the logistics of it are going to be, we really just want to have a mechanism that says we'll cooperate when both sides construct their own path so that they connect at some point. Not necessarily that one side is going to pay for the construction of the other or actually do it just that. There's some coordination there so that we don't have disconnected paths.
With that part?
Yep.
Will we have a cross-access agreement in order to allow us public use of that? If they, for instance, build a path on what would be the west edge of that main drive north-south, would we have full access, full rights publicly through that?
Yeah, I would assume that would be part of the site development plan process when they actually apply, that we would make sure that all public ways there have some sort of, you know, easement or public access.
Part of this, and you'll see it as you go further with Bart, is that the facility has to remain open to the public, all parts of it. But we can, as Bart points out, it can be edited.
I want to make sure. Yeah, and I understood that it was the facility, does that extend to the path trails or just the exterior fields and the building itself, so?
Yeah.
Change number five is in section 3C right there. It's the strike through, there shall be no restrictions upon the Yorkville Parks and Recreation Department's use of this discount. We're fine with that. That language is not the original proposal. That was something Kathy had originally recommended. The attorneys suggested that it might not be appropriate because then we could go in there and hook their entire facility for years at a 20% discount.
Which I thought was a great idea.
Intended to. Okay, change number six is just the simple insertion of the phrase during open gym hours and for members only when you're talking about the facility being open to the public. So it's clear that the public still has a right to access the facility, but the developer still has the right to basically charge subscription fee for being able to go in there and use certain portions of it, which we thought was reasonable. Seven is, it's a deletionated insertion there. It clarifies that the portion of the parking lot that's adjacent to the building, so their main parking lot, would still be subject to restrictions. So it wouldn't be publicly open all the time. And so they'd be able to reserve space for their patrons. But that the northernmost parking lot, which is shown in the actual exhibit as future parking of about 48 stalls, I believe, would be open to the public. And really, that's the parking lot that we care the most about because it's right next to the baseball and soccer facilities. So again, the actual land use plan that was part of the proposal could be amended at a future date as long as, you know, the building is still constructed in substantial performance for what's been discussed. And so the developer, prior to the meeting, had actually mentioned that the location of that parking lot might go east or it might reorient so it's an east-west parking lot. So that won't be nailed down, obviously, for many more months until the site development actually occurs. And that we felt that the phrase to the northernmost parking lot would be acceptable. So it's drafted in there as north parking lot, but that would be something we work with the attorneys to make sure is acceptable. And then the final change is on the following page. It's number eight. Again, it's just the simple insertion of the attorney's contact information for the facility. So again, all of those could be incorporated with a motion to change, as I mentioned. Or it could be done subject to legal review later. Or if everybody really just wants to see this in a couple weeks, we can proceed forward with the rest of the documents and vote on it two weeks from now.
I've reviewed it. We have absolute consensus. These issues are miniscule. As Bart said, there's two issues. Number one, the land use plan, which will clarify it further, and whether or not that will require an amendment to the use agreement is as they get moved forward in terms of their actual construction. The idea here was, upon closing, the purchase and sale, the real estate purchase agreement is done, closed, and forever behind us. So we wanted a use agreement to work together on this property. We're very well aware of the fact of our obligation to the surrounding subdivision, that it be public, open, et cetera, and the purchaser is absolutely willing to follow along with that. So this use agreement may, in fact, be presented to you several times before the facility is in place and operating.
Alkhauser?
Under C, this agreement may not be assigned by the purchaser or city nor village, et cetera, et cetera. And then under J, the part in there towards the bottom, purchaser expressly reserves the right to assign its rights. So there's potentially a conflict of language or, obviously, one is related to the agreement.
G says, heading to paragraph?
The C, yeah, 12C. And this is?
I mean, tuck and I'm the?
The real estate?
Okay.
The real estate purchase agreement. Page seven.
Okay.
Page seven.
Got it.
But it says unless city utilizes such assignment in connection with a like kind of exchange of the 1031.
Right.
So I assume there's no issue with that. One is saying that they shall not assign the other, reserves the right to assign as long as it follows the procedures?
Right. Thank you.
That that is?
Yes.
Exactly. Okay.
Yes. Pretty much in sync on the closing, so. And who will be the absolute winner?
Okay.
And then Bart, just quickly, this agreement, I see, if I just to piggyback it on Tim's memo, the money that the proceeds of the city is going to get from this sale at this point are not earmarked for anything.
Correct. It can be used for any purpose. And that's the subject of Tim's supplemental memo. He was just giving some additional background for Park Board's recommendation that it would be used on a recreation facility and not necessarily park department. But that's a budget decision.
Comments or questions?
One last thing on this one relating to the revenue from the sale. Since this is a park that is based on a contribution for Bristol Bay, I am asking that the City Council consider the use of those funds specifically for reimprovements of Bristol Bay Park. I think that since this is part of their park, it is theirs. To take these funds and put them somewhere else, I think that would be somewhat inappropriate since we are removing 15 acres of land from their area. So I just ask that the council consider that when we go through the budgetary process and strongly consider reinvesting in ball fields, parking facilities, improvements specifically to Bristol Bay Park as this is revenue coming out of that park since we are selling part of what is their regional park.
Anybody else?
I'm the exact opposite of that. After kind of looking at this from all sides, number one, building, that's exciting. I was excited the first time around, so I don't care where you put it, just put it here. But as far as the funds from this, the one thing that the city doesn't have anymore is facilities for indoor sports. I voted against buying the rec center, and I'm still standing by that. But I do agree that we need some sort of recreation center. I don't think Bristol Bay's needs are as great as the city as a whole. Maybe we can build something in Bristol Bay, but I don't think that keeping it in Bristol Bay is that important. I think focusing on parks to rec is more important than just the location where it's coming from because this has just basically been sitting there. And this is going to actually alleviate a lot of the parking issues that I get the majority of phone calls about. So I think even without adding a new slide to Bristol Bay's park, I think they're going to be pretty darn happy because as a guy who has three kids who are in the soccer program, I can attest to the fact that that place gets super stuck three times a year. I think they would greatly appreciate having that kind of relieved a little bit. And I was really excited to see that we could kind of use the north end of this for parking. Because as your kids get older, you actually work your way south in the parking or in the soccer field. So it's kind of at the right time, so I appreciate it.
Yes?
I'll make a motion to amend the real estate purchase agreement, sale agreement, and the lease use agreement in the packet to amend it to what the modifications is ready to the record by city administrator Olson.
Second.
Any comments on the amendment? Roll call, please. Terulis?
Aye.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Yay.
So now we need, any other questions on the main motion? Roll call on the main motion, please. Kalosamun?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Luschewski passes. Okay, that's all the mayor's report. I'd like to turn it over to Alderman and Alkhauser for Public Works' report.
Okay, we'll take counsel of the village first. Motion to approve a letter default being issued to the developer.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? We have an explanation?
Yeah, the update from Public Works was that there was supposed to be a staff meeting with the developer yesterday to get timeline and schedule. One of the main points of contact had a family emergency and had to run out of state. So we're in contact with him. We do expect him to be responsive in the future. But we are still recommending that we would issue the notice of default and then that gives him 60 days, basically, to come into compliance.
Comments or questions? Roll call. Kalosamun?
Aye.
Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Luschewski passes.
Okay, and now the item pulled from the consent. Make a motion to approve the IGA, the Kendall County TAP, for Kennedy Road Multi-Use Path.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Any comments or questions?
Sorry, I just looked up.
I'll give you a little?
Well, everybody knows I vote against everything having to do with the paths. But I will be voting for this one because somebody's willing to give us free money. So if anybody's willing to give us free money, I will always vote for it because it takes the burden off the taxpayers. But I will make a slight concession on this. On my perfect track record of voting against everything having to do with paths because I am more than happy to take the burden off the taxpayers of the City of Yorkville and place it on the taxpayers of the County of Kendall, so.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call. Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Yay.
Nate? Kalosamun?
Aye.
Okay, that's all from Public Works. Alderman, Cook, you want to take economic development?
A motion to approve an ordinance creating a planning and zoning commission and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I think this is awesome. If you've ever been a part of the process to go from an idea to a reality, the biggest hurdle is getting a bunch of unpaid people to show up to a meeting that they volunteered to be a part of three years prior. I think it's kind of exciting to kind of combine them. And my biggest concern was, what acronym are we going to use? I'll leave that up to you. I think it's a good idea.
Anybody else? Hey, roll call. Alkhauser?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Okay, I'm back. Oh, no public safety. And I'm back on with the administration. So I'd like to enter, or I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution providing for the submission to the electors of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, a referendum of whether the city should abolish the elected office of city clerk and the duties of the city clerk be assigned to the deputy clerk and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Just clarification, this is a binding referendum?
This would be a binding referendum.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call. Luschewski?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freeters?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Kalosamun?
Aye.
Aye.
Alcacer?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution providing for the submission to the electors of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, Illinois, a referendum of whether the city should abolish the elected of office of city treasurer and the duties of the city treasurer be assigned to the finance director and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
No more.
Comments or questions on this?
Yes.
Um, in 2012, I voted no on both of these, uh, because I was like, damn the man, frown hole in the back. Um, after understanding that the simple difference between appointments and elections is accountability and that through elections you get people like me.
We love you.
Thank you. And then through appointments, you get people like Rob. Now, I wore my glasses just for this dude today. See the difference between elected people and appointed people is that if I screw up, y'all can't do nothing. If he screws up, he's out on his butt. So from understanding the difference between those two ways of getting a position, um, makes me feel a little more comfortable about my own role, but it also makes me completely comfortable in kind of getting rid of it, because the reason why this was so strange was that that one guy ran for office, won, and then shows up and goes, I quit, which I thought was pretty cool, but I didn't totally get it. So now that I totally get it, that's, let's throw it out. Oh, and we also save $10,000 a year, which I can go over to Pat.
We want a vote on the guess of the number. It's just on the referendum. Any comments or question, are any other comments or questions? Wait, can we roll call?
Luschewski?
Aye.
Coke?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Freers?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Alcacer?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to entertain, or make a motion to approve a resolution providing for the submission to the electors of the United City of Yorkville, Kendall County, a referendum of whether the ci- city should become a home rule municipality and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions on this? Yes?
Yeah, um, obviously Mr. Milliron spoke at public, uh, comments about the home rule, and I just wanted to touch base on that. Um, anytime you say home rule, first thing everybody says is taxes. Taxes, 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 that's what home rule is for. Uh, I think the, the staff did a nice job of laying out several different examples in the memo, uh, of different things we're able to do, uh, on the home rule. Uh, the proof really is in the putting of our intent, I think. Um, for the last two to three years, uh, myself and several of our aldermen have been going to Springfield, uh, and we've been lobbying the legislature, um, to pass what we call home rule light, which would allow communities such as ours to have home rule, but not the taxing authority, because the taxing authority is not what we were looking for. We were looking for the other powers, uh, under home rule. And I don't think if taxation was our intention, uh, we would have been lobbying Springfield for the last two to three years for the home rule light. Unfortunately, Springfield being Springfield, um, our idea was, after many attempts shut down by the legislature and they, and they, it does not look like there's any intent in Springfield to pass home rule light, which would give communities home rule authority except for taxing. So it's either home rule or no home rule at this point. Uh, I think the memo is clear as to some of the ideas that we have as to things we want to do, uh, control the size of our, uh, of our wards, control the size of our city council. I don't want to have to go up to 14 aldermen, um, and within a few years, uh, for another home rule community, uh, and there's just a lot of other examples. Furthermore, uh, it is my intention, obviously, in the future, that if we were to do anything that would increase the tax burden on the taxpayers, uh, based on home rule, that we would then shift that burden to the community as a whole, not just the citizens of Yorkville. And it would be my intention to then, uh, lower property taxes by an equal amount. So if, if something were to be passed that raised, uh, $250,000 a year for the city, it would be my intention then to have the property taxes lowered by 250,000. So we would have the same net, but instead of having the residents of Yorkville paying for that 250,000, we would have residents from all over the place that come into Yorkville and use our facilities and pay for their gas and their food and their, everything else, paying for that 250,000, shifting the burden from the residents to non-residents. Um, so it is not my, my intention at least to raise taxes or anything on anybody, but I would like to have the, uh, the flexibility and authorities provided under the Home Rule Act, um, regarding everything else, uh, besides the taxation. So I would ask the community to look at the memo, contact, uh, the aldermen, speak to us as to what our intentions are, uh, and give it a fair shake in November when it's on the, uh, on the ballot.
Anybody else?
Um, over the last couple of months, we've been talking about this water study where we kind of joined forces and created a Voltron of Clean Water with Montgomery and Las Vegas. And, uh, the large thing, the big elephant in the room was the, uh, amount of money it was going to cost and the fact that whatever we borrowed, we'd have to pay back within 20 years, which didn't seem like nothing of a deal, but when you look at, bless you, when you look at the amount of money you end up spending, uh, in such a short period of time for something that you're going to be using for 20 to 30 to 40 years, um, it didn't make much sense to kind of go out for that much money if you're going to be screwed with it pretty soon. Um, so the number one item on the memo says you can incur debt beyond 20 years. Um, I think that's a beautiful idea, uh, because I think looking at a uphill of 70 million trying to build a water treatment plant per community that's actually about ready to blow up, um, is actually something that we need to kind of move on relatively soon. Um, so to keep on thinking that we have to pay that much money in 20 years when actually we can pay that much money over 40, um, makes a hell of a lot more sense in my opinion. The other thing that we were routinely speaking with, uh, the people down in Springfield about, um, were the landlord tenant issues. I know that right before we went down this time, me and Todd had kind of gone back and forth about the mold issues and how there is no legislation on them. So it kind of is falling on the city's lap. Well, the city has nothing to fall on because it's, we're not home rule, so we kind of have our, our hands tied. So in my meetings with a couple of people down there, my question was, well, what authority can you get with home rule light? And they kept on saying, home rule light's going nowhere. If you're going to do anything with home rule, you have to actually go out to referendum and convince people that it's a good idea, even understand that people are afraid of the taxes issue. Um, a lot of the people that I kind of deal with in Aurora, that are landlords, have a lot of the crime-free housing ordinances and stuff like that, those are all really, really good ideas if you're home rule. So I'm just, I'm looking forward in the big picture as to what types of tools that we can use, um, to kind of protect the city and protect people that already live here. Um, but also, there's, if you look in here, it says that we can kind of skirt around the idea of unfunded mandates. So instead of having to do something and not getting reimbursed for it, we can figure something else out to possibly not have to completely abide by those exact rules, which is really cool when you're dealing with the state of Illinois in case you do. Um, so I'm, I'm actually pretty excited about having the full conversation, not just sticking to three or four things that we, and talking to legislatures about. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about this idea.
Michael?
Yeah, I want to echo, I should have said in turn, I went to Springfield with Alma Clissimo and, uh, he was pretty right on about this. This will go in front, I think we need to do a good PR, explain ourselves when we go, if we can put it on the ballot and, uh, you know, let everybody know, maybe it's on the website or something like that, um, explaining the different things that are available.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Cut?
Aye.
Freers?
Aye.
Terulis?
Aye.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Alcacer?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Coke?
Aye.
Okay, we done the management of Park Board tonight, and we have one item under plank mission, so I'd like to entertain motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use for a commercial slash trade school within units B and C at 210 Beaver Street and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. We have no motions?
No more.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Randy.
Regarding the special use, the Grace Holistic Center for Education will no doubt be a first-rate alternative education facility in the community. Yorkville and the surrounding areas will benefit from this and similar alternative educational programs. Is my concern that this center is being considered in a non-compliant zoning. Current M1 zoning, limited manufacturing, industrial does not lend itself to the educational programming being proposed. When the city council amended the zoning ordinance last month allowing trade school, trade commercial schools in the M1 district, I raised concern of differentiating the types of schools that may be allowed as a special use. A trade commercial school pulled from the def, uh, pulled from the definition in the zoning reads, "A school established for the teaching of academic, industrial, clerical, managerial, artistic skills or alternative education. Surrounding this use of machinist-heavy equipment operators, sales and rentals of heavy equipment and trucks, heavy truck repairs, distribution operations, firearm trainings, firearms manufacturer, concrete ready-mix plant, municipal public works facilities, and more." Per our ordinance, the city allows a higher noise level in the M1 district as well. These noises can be distracting on a normal day, but impressionable students could be, poor impressionable student, students, it could be more challenging. Students being fenced in with semi-trucks and other heavy excavation equipment and distressed vehicles in a repair yard on the adjacent properties poses inviting risk for students. Diesel fumes, oils, and other materials are common in the district. All these illustrate the incompatibility of an alternative and holistic school operation being placed within an industrial district. While the school's concept is good and meritorious, there is a distinct incompatibility in this requested special use and the existing zoning and uses. We approved the zoning ordinance in November of 2014. Just 18 months later, the council changed the ordinances to allow the special use in M1 district. We took years to make the zoning ordinance, and we changed it at the first moment someone comes along and asks for something that is not allowed just because the building is vacant. There is a difference between filling the vacant buildings and being responsible to the community. I say you consider this one carefully. While I have no doubt that this will be a good school, I am very concerned about its location.
Any other comments or?
We have a crossfit over there to right, I mean, for one time it was over there. Yeah, in the general area. And, um, there's also food pantries over there to right, yes.
Any else? Roll call, please.
Freers?
Present.
Terulis?
Aye.
Pelosi?
Aye.
Alcacer?
Aye.
Luschewski?
Aye.
Coke?
Aye.
Cut?
Aye.
Okay. So do we don't have anything from zoning board of appeals, those city council reports, city clerk's report, any community, community and liaison reports? Okay, staff reports?
Just one item. Uh, I'll turn it over to the Director of Parks and Recreation for an update on Fourth of July.
Yeah, just a reminder, the, uh, Yorkville area Fourth of July celebration is Monday, July 4th. The parade will start at 9:00 AM at the high school, uh, and go around town square, and then we have the fireworks show at dusk over at Route 47. And, uh, if any of the aldermen would like to participate in the parade, we will have a float. If you could be there by like 8:45 in front of the high school, that would be great.
Anything else? Yep.
Uh, we had summer solstice last weekend. If you came down, you knew it was awesome. If you weren't there, it was awesome. Um, Parks and Rec kind of set the stage, got all the, pretty much the entire area set up for us. Amazing job. Um, if you don't know how awesome your Parks and Rec team is, um, I would definitely recommend hitting up any soccer game, any baseball tournament, any festival, and you will see not only those people there, but even on the days that they're not working, they come back and bring their families because this is where they hang out and it's where they throw parties. So I tried to get people to keep using hashtag swallow Yorkville, and it went over pretty well. Um, nobody from Parks and Rec would actually sign on to it, which I understand is probably a good idea politically, uh, but I'm still going to stay all the time, just shut up, turn your face red. But amazing job, thank you very much, and I'll look forward to Fourth of July.
Do we have any additional business? We have no executive sessions. Do we have any citizens' comments, items not, uh, on the agenda?
Hi, good evening. I'm Rachel LeRue, I'm from City Center Apartments. I just want to say thank you, Bart, for the email today, um, for having Midwest Environmental come out to the apartments. Uh, it looks like I'll be staying a little bit longer, unfortunately, um, the place I had fell through, which is okay. Um, but I, I wanted to share something that was posted on every other door except for those who complained about the mold at City Center Apartments. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the ones that did complain that had problems in their apartment were being harassed by the owners. Um, it's unfortunate that some of them have gotten eviction notices and 10 days to quit. Um, I try not to get involved in those type of situations, but it, it's hard, it's heart for them for me because there are families and there's children involved. Um, it's unfortunate that some people just can't take responsibility for some of the things that have happened in that apartment complex, so that's, um, I want, if it's okay, can I, I'd like to share this with you guys. That's awesome, I made enough copies. But this letter, among quite a few of the other letters that have been posted on the doors, unfortunately, I didn't get one, and Katie, the, the woman next door to me, didn't get one, and the other ladies didn't get any. The ones that complained about the mold and obviously had their apartments inspected, well, we feel as, if we're still staying there, that the owners or the landlords should still be communicating with the other ones who are still paying rent and still living there. But unfortunately, he's taken this very personally, instead of looking at it as a business, this is a business, my tenants are sick, or my tenants have a problem with their apartment, he should be saying, what can I do to fix this? What can we do to compromise, come together, and work together? But unfortunately, it's more of like, what can I do to get you out of the apartment complex and shut you up? And that's not fair. I mean, we only did what we were supposed to do because we didn't get the answers we needed from Jim and Rita. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that there are several families who are being, you know, taking court, that are about to be evicted because they did speak up and they did say something. And that's why I'm here, I'm actually not feeling very well, if you could tell, my face is getting ritter, ritter, but I'm actually not feeling well. But somebody had to come and actually take a stand for some of the other tenants that are there at City Center Apartments, and they had no problem with being here tonight. I just would really appreciate it, um, Bart, if I send you a couple of emails, if you could just respond. Um, I'm just very concerned about some of the other families, and I think you guys should probably take a look at that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Anybody else?
I already signed in once, Todd Milliron. This is not on the agenda, but it's something that everybody in this county is, uh, has questions about and involves the Kendall County Food Pantry. I emailed the chief last week, shortly after Maria's base death. Um, I'm sure his department's doing a good job. I am, I talked into Mr. Klingel at the executive session last time. There's lots and lots of documents, boxes and boxes that are, happen to be gone through. And, uh, I just want to make sure that Chief Hart has all the expertise that he needs to get to the bottom of this situation and, and do a thorough investigation. It's reported there's over $200,000 that's missing, probably closer to 250 from what I hear. What I'm also hearing is there's a severe lack of accountability by the board that was supposed to oversee, the executive director and the treasurer who are married to each other, and these four, these, uh, eight board members happen to be four married couples, which raises some concerns for me. My wife and I were, um, involved in the music boosters of Yorkville, or Yorkville High School Music Boosters, or CDUSD 115 Music Boosters, whatever you want to call it, for over 10 years. And we were responsible for handling in the neighborhood of between $30,000 and $50,000 a year, depending on how much those kids raised. Not only that, but my wife was also responsible for keeping track of the kids portion. If they sold something, then usually us boosters would kick in 25% of whatever they sold back to their accounts, so when they were of age, like, uh, every two years, that band and the music department takes a trip to like San Antonio or, uh, Disney World down in, in Florida, and they perform down there, and it's a week trip during like spring break, and those kids really banked that money. Anyway, when we went into this, there wasn't that many people. There was, uh, three teachers, one other parent, and my wife and I, and that was it. Now we have, you know, roughly 20-some people that show up at a monthly meeting, and, uh, we're no longer involved, but she was able to keep track of that. And one of the things that I requested when we became involved in that and were going to be responsible for handling money, and my family was, was that we would have two-party checks, so that I would not be a co-signer and somebody else would have to co-sign with my wife. And I, many times, as the vice president, I was kind of like the utility man, there was many times I had to chase down somebody that was on the board, or, it was an executive officer that had check signing capabilities, to have them sign a check, so that, whatever, we would have some accountability. So the donors of the Food Pantry have been very generous, and we care about the people in need in this, and that includes my family. And, uh, but if the Food Pantry is going to continue, there has to be not only the criminal police, if that's the case, um, addressed, but also, that was allowed to go on for so long. And, uh, it's just, it's unfathomable to me how, being in a position like that as a volunteer, that, you know, somebody who's supposed to be responsible and have accountability and ask questions and look at the books, and that wasn't happening, and it was allowed to go on for years and years and years. And all I'm asking is, just to make- And all I'm asking is just to make sure Chief Hart has all the resources he needs, and if he, he asks you for some additional funding for a forensic accountant or somebody like that to get to the bottom of this, to give him those resources, because the citizens of this county have many, many questions, and we have somebody who was, that I think was a good person, but maybe not supervised, that took her own life, and it appears to be she took her own life. And it's very upsetting to a lot and a lot of citizens in this county and this town that this was allowed to happen. So that's one of the things I wanted to talk about. The other thing was, I said through the last meeting on your water treatment plant presentation with Montgomery and Oswego. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no inner government agreement for boundaries with Joliet. Am I right about that? We have never been able to negotiate that. And the planning that you did, or the planning area that you outlined, was very, very generous to the south, all the way down to like Route Fifty-two. And I'm telling you, the, you know, everybody says Joliet's going to stop at the river. We don't know if it's the Fox or the Mississippi. Okay? So what I'm trying to tell you is, is that before you do a lot of planning on this, is that maybe you might want to give a Joliet and see about how big is that chunk down south that they think they, they want to gobble up, and get that done before you start making big plans for a seventy million dollar water treatment facility, and you might end up not having that land area down there because Joliet beat you to the annexation. And it would be behoove, if you're going to do this long-term planning, is figure that out with Joliet. And, you know, ask them where do they think they're going to be? Because right now, they're about to go, go, on Caden Farm. And I know that you guys are about down to Caden Farm, too, but, you know, it would be a lot easier planning than start pitting landlords against landlords to annex here and annex there, like we went through with Bristle Bay and all that ten years, fifteen years ago, when basically you had these annexation laws between Montgomery and Yorkville, and it was, you know, every man for themselves. So if you're going to get involved in this long-term planning for water, and I, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I do think that you might want to figure out what territory you want to plan for and not have any surprises. And I might also go for Oswego, too, because their southern boundary was, it's a little more defined, but there's still a lot of open land down there that could be, could be Oswego or could be Joliet. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with no other comments, let's adjourn immediately.